For our rise of your pledge allegiance, we'll call this meeting to order at 7:03. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, could we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Issen.
Here.
Mr. Chasse is absent. Dr. Procheco is absent. Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Tre.
Here.
We've got a form, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. I'd like to, this time, they have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 11th, 2013 meeting.
Salute.
We have a motion by Dallas.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. We'll step right into information. Dr. Butler?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First information, Eric Swope, our student union representative.
Penn Trafford High School has been very productive in its school winter month. The food committee has had multiple improvements in the cafeteria. Currently, we are working on advertisements for our breakfast program and new additions to lunch. Soon, their recommendations for the breakfast menu will go into effect and hopefully boost our attendance for this crucial meal. The student union is working on our spring fundraiser that is taking place April 26th. This first annual cornhole tournament will occur after school and money will be raised for Pittsburgh Children's Hospital. The Pittsburgh CLO featured a presentation last week about the Constitution for all freshmen and seniors. This entertaining presentation was a supplement to the social studies programs and was funded by the student union. The student union has also decided to help fund Alex Deutsch's Eagle Scout project. Next week, the election process for new officers representatives will begin. This election is for the 2013-2014 school year. On March 22nd, the student union members will be attending the PASC District Four Leadership Conference hosted by Ford Cherry. This conference will help display leadership qualities and how to improve the student union in each school. On another note, Penn Trafford physics students traveled to Saint Vincent College last week for the annual pasta bridge competition. Mr. Tusek's AP Physics and Mr. Rieger's honors physics classes worked on this project for over a month outside of school. Each team had to design a pasta bridge that was less than one kilogram. Mr. Tusek's class finished fourth in the competition and held over seventeen pounds. The community action program has been very busy working on the food drive, which finished today. They are continuing counting, but so far, they've raised eleven thousand items. The elementary schools also contributed three thousand items to this drive. Finally, the Definitile Days campaign will be over, or will start next Wednesday, for the American Cancer Society. Thank you.
Mr. President, any questions? Eric.
Very good. Thanks again. You're a sharp young man.
He always does.
He always does.
Well-versed man. Okay, next is Students of the Month, and we'll start with Mr. DeNapoli.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
It is my privilege to introduce the Level Green Student of the Month to you this evening, Mr. George Mochin. George is a fourth grade student in Mrs. Andrews' class. He is the son of George and Debbie Mochin, and the big brother to Emma Mochin, who is also a Level Green student in first grade. George enjoys all aspects of school. He especially enjoys science and art. Mrs. Crystal Light, his art teacher, states George's drawings are unbelievable. He always works hard, is courteous, and is simply a pleasure to have in class. Out of school, George likes to wrestle and play baseball. He said it feels good when he's able to hit a home run, and it helps his team win. Other things that George enjoys or doing is collecting bottles that he finds wherever he may venture, as well as the ones his pack gives him. He enjoys hunting, playing football, and catching baseball with his dad in the backyard. Most of all, George loves spending time with his family, especially when they go to Disney World. Jeez, I'm hoping that's happening soon again. In the future, George would like to learn more about law enforcement and maybe go into the military. But until then, he's going to continue to make his parents proud of being a great kid. Level Green Elementary is excited to have George Mochin as the Penn Trafford Student of the Month. Good job, George.
George, can anyone help me? Sharp kid. I need some assistance this year. Emma's going to help me present this to George. She's very proud of her brother, and she's going to shake hands with her brother and for me. And you're going to go in the military, George, you think sometimes? Would you consider the Marines? Right answer. Thank you very much. Great job. Okay, our next Student of the Month, Mr. Simpson, Penn Middle.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Penn Middle School March Student of the Month is Jacob Beilheller. Jacob is an eighth grader. He's the son of John and Mary Beilheller. He's... Come on. Talking to his teachers, and they say he's a very well-rounded student, involved in athletics and pushing himself academically. He has an outstanding attitude in all his classes. Always willing to participate and give his best effort. He's the kind of kid that will go up to the board and explain problems that others won't even try. He works well with all students, and he gets along with everyone, and accepts students for who they are, even when they are different from him. He's extremely kind and helpful. Most importantly, Jake is a kid that really seems to enjoy school, and he's always smiling. Jake also helps out. He's Mr. Steele, our tech director, his assistant, running errands and making things for Mr. Steele, fixing everything down there. Likes to tinker in Mr. Steele's room. His favorite subjects are history and science. He thinks the past is fascinating, and science-wise, he likes to know how things work, which kind of goes with his tinkerhood. Couple buddies, he's an only child, so I asked a couple friends and quote-unquote, "He's just a good dude." Looking to help people. Loves to help out people without regard for himself. He respects everyone, never mean to anyone, especially the sixth and seventh graders. Tries to include everyone, especially those who are left out. He plays center on his ice hockey team, the Westmore Eagles, and he's currently a team leader in points. I mean Crosby had that in common. He's an active member of the National Young Scholars Program based out of Washington, D.C., and this program focuses on developing leadership skills in our youth. In the summer, he enjoys boating and water skiing with his family and friends. I asked him about his future plans, and he, you know, without hesitation, an eighth grader says to me, "Chemical or metallurgical engineering?" I had to practice metallurgical. Rural math teacher, x squared, y squared. You know, Jake's just a great, down-to-earth kid. He's what makes Penn Middle and Penn Trafford a special place. I think, you know, when I talked to him about, in our conversations, he talked about his determination. I love this quote, "People who tell me I can't do something are destined to be disappointed," which is an honor. Nice job, Jacob. Good job.
I take it on behalf of the board, want to thank you for all your accomplishments. Very pleased that you enjoy the past.
We look at the past as meeting you, enjoying all your people, and since there are a lot of us over here, I'm sure you enjoy us all, including your parents. Is that correct? You got the right answer.
Congratulations, you so well.
Thanks. Tonight, we have a guest for Mr. Neenglais. Mr. Sullivan will be introducing the high school student of the month.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. I get the privilege and honor to recognize Julie Hearts.
Julie?
Julie is joined by her mother, father, her brother, and sister. You know, when I was asked to recognize our next Student of the Month, I wasn't looking for just a great student with great grades, but I was instead looking for a good student with great personality and character, P.T. Warrior. I found someone with all of those characters, characteristics, but also with genuine humility. Julie, a senior, about a month ago, had to be convinced by her guidance counselor, Mr. Martin, that she was currently number one in her class. He had to tell her that, and she said, "Really? Are you serious? Don't kid me." And then, on top of that, when I called her mother to invite her this evening, her mom said, "Really? She didn't tell me. That's awesome." That impressed me about Julie. She is a great student, currently number one in her class, and the type of person that is committed, always prepared, and works to her fullest potential every day because she wants to. It's important to her, and for all the right reasons, quietly, with humility. Maybe that's why she was voted most likely to succeed in eighth grade, as well as twelfth grade. Julie maintains a 4.49 GPA, all the while carrying a heavy workload, much unlike my senior year. Macroeconomics honors, physics honors, AP English II, college calculus, Spanish four honors, and AP biology. Julie is also on the high school swim team, where she lettered for the past three years, and was voted by her peers as captain. She has won the Penn Trafford Swimming Coaches Award, and Mr. Babic credits the girls' team's successes from Julie's leadership. This year, at Chatham University's Eighteenth Annual National Girls and Women's in Sports Day celebration, Julie received the Patience and Bladen Spirit of Sport Award in the high school senior category. Chatham gives this award as a celebration of the accomplishments of regional female high school and college student athletes who make a positive contribution in the classroom, on the playing field, local, and in the community. Julie helps with younger children in pre-aqua and gives swims lessons. Her English teacher recommended her go to the English Summer Program at Pitt. She was recently asked to go to the Pitt Chemistry Olympics for the third straight year. She's a member of the National Honor Society and Spanish Club, and was honored with the status of AP Scholar through advanced placement testing. Julie has served as an altar server, crossbearer for three years at her church, and has helped in the kitchen at Vacation Bible School. She has also volunteered at Penn Trafford's triathlon for three years. Her teachers were extremely excited to talk about her, and all said she's one of the best students they've ever had. She is a leader amongst her peers, and I hear that students beg the teacher to work with her in groups. And everyone that I spoke to commented on Julie's sense of humor, which we all knew is a key to success. Julie will be attending the University of Pitt in the fall. Julie, thanks for being a Penn Trafford worker. Congratulations.
Thank you, Julie. Your accomplishments are amazing. You're a unique lady and a very special person, and like Karen, you're thoughtful, you're intelligent. You're just going to be a continued great success in life. I hope at some stage in life, as many of us would think so here, I hope I'm someday able to call you a friend.
Thank you.
I wish you the very best. Take care, Julie. We wish you the best. We wish you the best.
We could have all the Students of the Month over here with Dr. Tre. So we can have a little photo opportunity for the parents or anybody else. That would be outstanding. Thank you. Parents, feel free to get up and take pictures if you wish to do so. We'll give you a few minutes.
You can keep the eye. We want to keep it.
Okay. At this time, you can feel free to leave. You're more than welcome to stay, but we also understand that you have a life outside of school and maybe dancing parades or something. But we thank you for coming. If you have to go do something else, please do that. No one will be insulted. So, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You know, I'm always, I'm remiss sometimes. I always forget to recognize our video club members and Mr. Benton for coming in and doing these videos for us. So, thank you very much. We see that, I'm starting to recognize faces now, so thank you very much for doing that service. My last information is building project update. Wednesday, we'll be taking a trip, a few of us, to the Kraus Innovation Center, or Kraus Innovation Studio at Penn State to see kind of a classroom of the future, see what their version of that is. That'll be an exciting trip. And hopefully, in the, well, I know in the upcoming months, there'll be decisions that the board will have to make concerning the building project. So, that's my update there, and that's all my information. Dr. Tre.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. At this time, we'll go to recognition of visitors. We do have one. Bill, I have to go through the rules again. I hope you don't mind.
No problem. How about?
Bill Gordy will be speaking to us, and Bill, obviously, you have to state your name, address, and group affiliation, and your statement has to be less than five minutes, and you've got to direct it to me and nobody in particular. And I could interrupt you if you're too lengthy. Personally, direct abuse of a senior is irrelevant, and you're up. Thank you.
Bill Gordy, 2555, Brooklyn, Harrison City. After reading in the paper last week about personnel issue that we had previously, which I realize you cannot discuss, my question is, have you done anything to make sure whatever that issue was is not going to happen again, and if so, what have you done?
That's a, that's a good question. What we can't stay or can't, we have to be careful what we do say. I would say that we, that decision was mutually beneficial, and we made adjustments to not be in a situation like that in the future. There were some things well beyond our control, or beyond the other person's control, but it's been managed well, and the people here have stepped up in a fantastic way to make it a long-term, better solution, and we're all moving on, and I don't see anything that could happen again. Sorry to be so general.
Yeah, and I realize that, but I just, I guess my other concern was, if I screwed up and cost my company $100,000, I think I'd be reprimanded, disciplined, fired. Can you elaborate on any of that, what may have occurred?
Well, we can't, we can't really talk about that in any capacity. I would object to your perspective, because it isn't quite that simple, and we've compensated in other ways, but we can't.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else that we missed? Okay, now, we'll move back into motions. May have a motion to approve the treasures report and the high school extracurricular activities fund report.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Bruce.
Scott.
Scott, I'm sorry.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. In that delivery of that last motion, we had a little side discussion related to whether there was more information to deal with the building escalation, and there was no other information. That was a side conversation. This time, it would be dealing with an executive session if necessary. At the previous executive session, which we arrived from a minute late, and we apologize for that being entered too late, but what we held prior was to deal with personnel and labor negotiations. I'll step into new business. Athletics and extracurricular. Mrs. Issen.
First of all, I want to say, I went to, my husband and I attended the basketball, boys' basketball banquet yesterday. The season didn't go quite like they wanted it to, but it was still a nice event. The seniors worked hard. They were disappointed, but, you know, what can you do? It doesn't always work out the way you want it, and we appreciated the invitation. We're glad we were able to attend. Okay, my first motion is to move to accept the following athletic and extracurricular resignations. Walt Bechtel is head boys' golf coach, and Rick Ball is coordinator of Deer Valley program. I want to say he's been doing it for 28 years, something like that, so we're going to miss him.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following athletic personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Marcos Palacios, boys varsity soccer assistant coach, and Leah Vannelli, girls' middle school soccer assistant coach.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34, Act 151, and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Mark DeSantis, volunteer high school JV/varsity baseball coach. Lane Locke, volunteer JV/varsity softball coach. Nick Lynn, volunteer boys volleyball assistant coach.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Second. Second by Rich.
Motion carried.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Bids were advertised and received from two companies for football uniforms for the 2013-14 school year. Bids were opened on Friday, March 1st, 2013, at 11:00 a.m. in the administration building as published and advertised. Bids were reviewed and tabulated in the central office and reviewed by the business manager and personnel involved, and it is recommended that the football uniform bid in the total amount of $20,000 be awarded pending budget approval to Natali Sporting Goods, 209 Fifth Avenue in Keysport, PA.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following pre-student teachers, student teacher, and interim teachers cooperating schools, or IUP, Pitt Greensburg, Carle University, University of Pittsburgh, as listed.
Second.
Yeah. Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34, Act 151, and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Mark DeSantis, volunteer high school JV/varsity baseball coach. Lane Locke, volunteer JV/varsity softball coach. Nick Lynn, volunteer boys volleyball assistant coach.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34, Act 151, and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Mark DeSantis, volunteer high school JV/varsity baseball coach. Lane Locke, volunteer JV/varsity softball coach. Nick Lynn, volunteer boys volleyball assistant coach.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
My last motion, move to renew the proposed Penn Trafford athletic training contract with Accela Health effective July 1st, 2013, based on the following fee schedule. 2013 to '14 school year, $26,000. '14 to '15 school year, $27,000. '15 to '16 school year, $28,000.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Do I hear a question? Yes, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Sting.
I got it.
Okay, we have one extension?
Yeah, I got it.
Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Vice President. This is Vice President. Let's move to budget and finance, and this will be Mr. Newell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the general operating budget for the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number Seven for the fiscal year July 1st, 2013 to June 30, 2014, in the total amount of $5,361,530. The Penn Trafford School District's contribution will be $35,544.18.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve expenditures relating to the high school renovation project submitted by Access Architecture for the month of February 2013 in the amount of $86,250.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Bids were advertised and received from two companies for football uniforms for the 2013-14 school year. Bids were opened on Friday, March 1st, 2013, at 11:00 a.m. in the administration building as published and advertised. Bids were reviewed and tabulated in the central office and reviewed by the business manager and personnel involved, and it is recommended that the football uniform bid in the total amount of $20,000 be awarded pending budget approval to Natali Sporting Goods, 209 Fifth Avenue in Keysport, PA.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Buildings and grounds and safety. Mr. Leonard.
I have nothing for tonight's business, Mr. President.
Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation. Mr. Stovall.
Nothing denied, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Food service, Mr. Neiman.
Nothing denied, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. So, moving to the personnel curriculum, Mr. Trucey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of March 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following conference requests. Gray Cappuccioni Bridges Conference at Kate May, New Jersey, from May 8th through 10th, 2013, at a cost of $1,015. This conference will enhance the dual enrollment program and enrich the learning environment. And Glenn L. Cooper, National Federation of State High School and School Association Conference at Indianapolis, Indiana, from April 20th to 22nd, 2013, at no cost to the district. This is part of the obligation of the National FA Trainers Association Secondary School Committee Chair.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following retirement resignations. Teachers, effective June 30, 2013. Juan Castelli, family in consumer science at Penn Middle School. Kathy Detor, grade one teacher, Sunrise Estates. Ron Evans, health and physical education teacher at Penn Middle School, effective June 1, 2013. Diane Grandstaff, district-wide librarian. Judith List, kindergarten teacher, Harrison Park. Ronald Nygros, art teacher, Penn Trafford High School. Charlene Sarver, grade four teacher, Harrison Park. Mary Ann Thomas, grade two teacher, Charaf Elementary School. Custodian Maintenance Garage. Eugene Reddish, custodian at Penn Trafford High School, effective April 30, 2013.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the following retirement resignations. Teachers effective June 30, 2013. Juan Castelli, family in consumer science at Penn Middle School. Kathy Detor, grade one teacher, Sunrise Estates. Ron Evans, health and physical education teacher at Penn Middle School, effective June 1, 2013. Danny Grandstaff, district-wide librarian. Judith List, kindergarten teacher, Harrison Park. Ronald Nygro, art teacher, Penn Trafford High School. Charlene Sarver, grade four teacher, Harrison Park. Mary Ann Thomas, grade two teacher, Trafford Elementary School. Custodian maintenance garage, Eugene Reddish, custodian at Penn Trafford High School, effective April 30, 2013. And Keith Schmidt, district-wide, effective April 18, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013, and returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. Juan Castelli, family in consumer science at Penn Middle School. Kathy Detor, grade one teacher, Sunrise Estates. Ron Evans, health and physical education teacher at Penn Middle School, effective June 1, 2013. Dan Grandstaff, district-wide librarian. Judith List, kindergarten teacher, Harrison Park. Ronald Nygro, art teacher, Penn Trafford High School. Charlene Sarver, grade four teacher, Harrison Park. Mary Ann Thomas, grade two teacher, Trafford Elementary School. Custodian maintenance garage, Eugene Reddish, custodian at Penn Trafford High School, effective April 30, 2013. And Keith Schmidt, district-wide, effective April 18, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. And returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. And returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. And returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. And returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. And returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Kelly Pratt, grade two teacher, Harrison Park, effective January 14, 2013. And returning to work April 15, 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the final adoption of school calendar for employees' calendar for 2013 and '14 school year and make it part of official minutes.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.